Okay, I will call this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, the roll call.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
All right, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, County Engineer, Paul Gruner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrators, ladies and gentlemen. We have a number of resolutions on the agenda today. The first is Resolution 20-804, to approve the purchase agreements and authorize appropriations for the acquisition of standard highwaysements and temporary construction easements for the Chicken Bristle Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in Jackson Township. 805 is to accept a letter of credit and subdividers contract for the Downing Farm plat in Washington Township in the amount of $404,561.29. 806 is to authorize an LPA federal-local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Social Row Road Project Phase One. 807 is to authorize an agreement with the Miami Conservancy District to provide bridge inspection and inventory services. 808 is to amend the agreement with Woolport, Inc., for structured general engineering services by extending the date through December 31, 2020. And 809 is to revise the promifacy speed limit on Snyder Road in Jefferson Township in accordance with Section 4511.21 of the Ohio Revised Code.
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 20810, accepting Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Criminal Justice Services for the Regional Agencies Narcotic and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in an amount of $60,200. We have Resolution 811, accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice through the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program in an amount of $69,717.
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Let's have a quick question, Michael. On the grant from the Department of Justice, I mean, are there specific things that they have to use that for, or?
Yeah, it has to be for COVID-related items that come from the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
And they'll use this in Department of Justice format. So whatever the Sheriff is using in public, and he's got a broad range due to public health that he can use those dollars for.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
All right, next is the Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Monday Community Correctional Institute, we have Resolution 812, authorizing an agreement with Remtiftiff Solutions LLC to provide medical services in an amount not to exceed $30,000 through June 30, 2021.
Oh, I move for approval, sorry.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 813, the Bureau of Justice Assistance for FY 2020 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grants Program, competitive in the amount of $1222. We have Resolution 814, the Office of Criminal Justice Services, for the funding of opiate testing supplies, training, and travel in the amount of $41,387.70.
I move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 And I do have a question. I don't know if you guys have the answer right now, but I know the opioid numbers were way up. Are they still going up, or flattening out?
I don't have the latest numbers, Commissioners, for June, but the last numbers we did see when we compared this year to last year, even back to 2017, the numbers were continuing on the increase, so.
Okay, thank you.
County Coroner.
Under the County Coroner, Commissioners, we have Resolution 815, authorizing a grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the FY 2020 strengthening the Medical Examiner Coroner System Program in an amount of $125,000.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Law Library.
Under the Law Library, we have Resolution 816, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the statewide consortium of county law library resource boards for a one-time grant award in the amount of $4,996.10.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator.
Under the Clerk's Office, Commissioners, we have approval of the minutes of the meeting on June 23, 2020. Resolution 817, approval of bills, and that list is available in the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Administrative Services, Tyler Small.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have quite a few resolutions today, as well as some late items. The first is 818, this is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 819, authorize a grant application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for the Fatherhood Family Focus Interconnected Resilient and Essential Grant for the Montgomery County Fatherhood Initiative. 820, authorizes a lease agreement with the Village of New Lebanon on behalf of the Clerk of Courts for the leasing of 17,074 square feet of space located at 195 South Clayton Road for a two-year term ending June 30, 2022, and a third-year renewal option in the amounts of $119,520 for the first year, $121,908 for the second year, and $125,568 for the renewal option. 821, amends the lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the David Road Elevated Water Tank by extending the term through March 31, 2023. 822, amends the agreement with Bricksian Meyer Incorporated for consultant services in support of the Job and Family Services purchasing centralization by extending the term of the agreement through July 31, 2020. And the next resolution is 823. This amends Resolution 20-0736, authorizing the purchase from Clark Equipment Company Doing Businesses Bobcat Company of 1 2020 Bobcat Compact Track Loader by authorizing a trade-in of an Ambusher DL66 brush mower and a revised cost of $94,594.69. The next several resolutions extend price agreements for Environmental Services through June 30, 2021. The first is 824 with Badger Meter Incorporated for water meters and repair parts. 825 with Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for crushed stone, sand, and gravel. 826 with Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for crushed stone, sand, and gravel. That's for asphalt. The last one was for aggregate. 827 is with Ferguson Enterprises Doing Businesses Ferguson Waterworks for brass parts. 828 is with Neptune Equipment Company for water meters and repair parts. 829 is with Pickroll Brothers Incorporated for brass parts. The next two resolutions authorize purchases through state-term cooperative contracts for the Data Processing Department through December 31, 2020. The first is 830 with Dell Marketing LP for Microsoft Server Data Center Software and Licenses in an amount not to exceed $114,855.84. And last is 831, Dell Marketing LP for Microsoft SQL Server Software and Licenses in an amount not to exceed $113,939.12. And we have four late items for you today. The first is 890, this solicits proposals for a technology audit for the Clerk of Courts. 891 extends the price agreement with Sparks Commercial Tires Incorporated for solid waste loader tires for the Environmental Services Department through May 31, 2021. 892, authorize a sole-source purchase from Environmental Systems Research Incorporated for the annual software maintenance renewal for the GIS computer application software for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $60,875. And last, but certainly not least, is 893, this authorizes an agreement with County Corp to disburse approximately $40 million of CARES Act funds to small businesses in Montgomery County with administration costs not to exceed $120,000 through December 31, 2020.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next is Environmental Services, Matt Hillard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I've got four resolutions for approval. Resolution 832, approve the plan specifications and estimated cost of $263,577.14 and solicit bids for construction of the sanitary sewer facilities for the Maple Crest Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Resolution 833, solicit a request for qualifications for consulting services for the Arc Flash Assessment. 834, accept the subdividers contract for the Traffic Circle Water Main Extension Development. And Resolution 835, accept the 20% performance bond for the Windstone Section 3 development in the amount of $74,360.30.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A, O, and B.
Under the Office of Management and Budget, we have Resolution 836, approve the 2021 state fiscal year permanent appropriations of $21,352,724 for county offices and agencies that are appropriated on the state fiscal year basis. These are for the offices, Commissioners, that start in the fiscal year 7-1 and go to a 6-30. We appropriate those grants separately. It would be similar to our JFS operations in similar offices.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Tom Carey.
Good afternoon. I have a lengthy list this afternoon for your approval. Almost every one of these is the extension of contracts for community-based nonprofit services. Those remain available through the Human Services Levy. Almost all, but not every one of them. Under Human Services Planning and Development, 837 will amend the agreement with Daybreak Incorporated for the Daybreak Opportunity Zone Program by modifying the funding lines and articles of the agreement in an amount not to exceed $169,855 through June 30, 2021. Then the following group will authorize agreements through June 30, 2021. They are 838 with West Ohio Community Action Partnership for the Nurturing Parenting Program in an amount not to exceed $72,814.28, and this is from the Ohio Children's Trust Fund. Then 839 is with Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley for the nurturing parenting home visiting services in an amount not to exceed $76,756.40 from the Ohio Children's Trust Fund. Then we have two consulting agreements with Sinclair Community College through June 30, 2021. 840 is with the Fast Forward Center in an amount not to exceed $400,000. 841 is development and coordination of mentoring services at a cost not to exceed $200,000. Then we need to extend agreements through June 30, 2021. 842 with YWCA Dayton for SRO Case Management Services, not to exceed $27,700. 843 with Homeful for coordinated entry assessment services, not to exceed $170,000. Then we have a lengthy list. These are to amend agreements to modify articles and exercise options through June 30, 2021. 844 with Artemis Center for Domestic Violence Trauma Informed Services, $275,134. 845, again with Artemis Center for Advocacy Services for Victims of Domestic Violence, not to exceed $100,661. 846 with Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Greater Miami Valley for the Bigs and Badges at East Dayton After School Miracles, not to exceed $25,000. Again, 847, again with Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Miami Valley for the Bigs and Badges at East End Champions, not to exceed $25,000. 848, Boys and Girls Club of Dayton for the Ready to Learn Program, not to exceed $50,000. 849 with Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley, Irma's House, not to exceed $50,000. 850, again with Catholic Social Services, for the Families Stabilization and Support Program, not to exceed $100,000. 851, Dakota Center for the After School Literacy and Leadership Development Program, not to exceed $36,500. 852 with Daybreak for Youth Shelter Services to homeless Montgomery County residents, not to exceed $176,732.36. 853, Good Neighbor House for Supportive Dental Services, not to exceed $100,000. 854, Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley for Adult Day Services, not to exceed $35,814. 855, Greater Dayton Volunteer Lawyers Project for Pro-Bono Legal Services, not to exceed 856, House of Bread for the Lunch 365 a Year Program, not to exceed $37,500. 857, House of Bread for Outreach Meals, not to exceed $10,000. 858, Legal Aid of Western Ohio for Collaborative Holistic Legal Services, not to exceed $75,000. 859, Legal Aid of Western Ohio for the Legal Assistance for Survivors Program, not to exceed $25,000. 860, Miami Valley Housing Opportunities for the Supportive Living Assistance for Tenant Empowerment Program, not to exceed $68,382.16. 861, Parity Incorporated Youth Development for Success Program, not to exceed $60,000. 862, Senior Resource Connection for Emergency Home Delivered Meals, not to exceed $186,775. 863, Senior Resource Connection Home Delivered Meals Under 60, not to exceed $121,000. 864, St. Vincent de Paul for Emergency Shelter Services to homeless Montgomery County residents, not to exceed $1265,098.64. 865, St. Vincent de Paul for Housing-Focused Shelter Services, not to exceed $337.91. 866 with the Food Bank Incorporated for Hunger Relief Services, not to exceed $110,000. 867, United Way of Greater Dayton Area for HelpLink 211 Services, not to exceed $55,000. 868, University of Dayton Empowering Children with Hope and Opportunity Program, not to exceed $75,000. 869, Wesley Community Center for the After School Program at Westwood, not to exceed $82,800. 870, West Care Ohio Doing Businesses East End Community Services for the Miracle Makers Program, not to exceed $168,750. 871, West Care Ohio Doing Businesses East End Community Services Center, Youth Development Center, not to exceed $129,000. 872, the YMCA of Greater Dayton for the Educational Centers of Excellence YMCA Program, not to exceed $199,144. 873, YMCA Greater Dayton for the YMCA After School Program, not to exceed $59,899. 874, YWCA Dayton for the Domestic Violence Case Management Project in the YMCA Dayton Domestic Violence Shelter, not to exceed $26,000. 875, YWCA Dayton for Domestic Violence Emergency Shelter Services to homeless Montgomery County residents, not to exceed $146,000. 876, YWCA Dayton for Housing-Focused Shelter Services, not to exceed $19,190. Then under the Department of Job and Family Services, we also have agreements that we need to extend. 877 will authorize an agreement with Catholic Social Services to provide senior guardianship program services, not to exceed $44,594 through June 30, 2021. 878 will amend the agreement with Dakota Center for Senior Services as part of the Golden Agers Program by modifying articles in the agreement. 879 will exercise Option 1 with Universal Transportation Systems LLC DBA UTS to provide non-emergency transportation, transport broker, and transportation provider services by modifying articles of the agreement through December 31, 2020. Then we have a few where we need to amend agreements to modify articles and exercise options through June 30, 2021. They are 880 with Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley for the Senior Outreach Program, not to exceed $103,359. 881 with Senior Resource Connection for the Community Geriatric Nurse Services Program, not to exceed $41,436. 882, Wesley Community Center for the West Dayton Senior Services Program, not to exceed And then finally, we need to authorize agreements for substitute care services through March 31, 2022. Those four are 883 with BGJ Community in Richmond, 884 with Interloc Corporation, 885 with the Bear Foundation, and finally, 886 with Victory House LLC.
I move for approval.
Second, and I'd like to say something about that. You know, one of the responsibilities of county commissioners, because we're an administrative arm of the state, and that is to provide human services to our citizens here in Montgomery County. And I think by Tom Kelly reading those, hopefully, our citizens understand the depth of the need that is out there in our community. So I'm more than happy to second that.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And I just wanted to echo, I was gonna, I think this is a great opportunity, just as Judy just indicated, that it shows the wide breadth of services that we provide, and how important the Human Services Levy is, that we all work together to meet these needs, and when you list them one after another, and I know we didn't do them all, so it just gives a hint of just what, that collaboration and that support between the county and all these agencies, what good it does in our communities. So I actually appreciate you going through that whole list. It reminds us of the things that we sometimes take for granted, and then when you spell it out, you realize how much good is done. So thanks, Tom.
Thank you. And it also reinforces the strong support that we have from our community in the Human Services Levy, and how valuable these services are to all of our community, to make sure that citizens have the ability to attain access to the services they need as they need them.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate seeing the broad spectrum throughout the county, but these are partners who just do amazing work on limited amounts of money, you know? You can look at the difference in the dollars, and, you know, there's reasons that some get more than others, depending on how many people they serve, but they're just doing a phenomenal job, all of our nonprofits, so I want to thank them.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
You know, Commissioners, thank you, Tom. You know, Commissioners, the social shows that during this COVID pandemic, the operations around these nonprofits, around JFS, around Solid Waste, Environmental Services, Stillwater, those operations continue to go on. And this is another example, when we talk about CARES Act, and we talk about those dollars, county services have never stopped. They've continued to go on. And so, so thank you, and.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, next, Business Services, Chris Williams.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have two resolutions and two late items for you today. Under Workforce 0887, authorizing an agreement with ADP, Inc., for the Workforce Now Essential Timekeeping Solution Module for the Youth Works Program, in an amount not to exceed $23,172 through December 31, 2020, which options to extend. Under CED, we have 0888, authorizing a delegation of activities agreement with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for Fair Housing Services, in amount not to exceed $100,000 through December 31, 2020. And for late items, under Workforce, we have two resolutions amending agreements to provide in-school and out-of-school employment and training services by modifying articles through June 30, 2021. Resolution 0894, Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio DBA Miami Valley Urban League, in amount not to exceed $300,000. And 0895, Yes for Youth, in amount not to exceed $500,000.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and approved. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Chris, could you talk a little bit about Resolution 887 and the Youth Works, because there's a lot of people that might think that Youth Works is not really functioning due to COVID, but you and your team have done a great job of getting us more employers and bringing more youth in. So you can talk about our numbers a little bit?
Yes, certainly. It is a year-round program, not just summer. Like you stated, we never stop working in this program. Currently, we are trying to ramp up additional employers to place our youth. We have 1,200 youth. We've placed well over 400 right now into jobs. We're working to place them, not just into jobs, but into additional training as well. So the team, Garth and Marvin, are doing a great job.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, now we move to a hearing, correct? Okay, the hearing on the Philadelphia Drive Culvert Rehabilitation Project in Harrison Township. And that's Resolution 20-0889.
Okay, Commissioners, we'll wait. Joe Durham is going to do the presentation remotely. Wait till we get Joe up here.
Hey, Joe.
He's our project manager on this project.
Can you? Here we go. Hi, Joe, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay, after Ward swears you in, feel free to share your screen, and then you're ready to go.
Mr. Gruner, Mr. Durham, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got?
Yeah, I do.
Carry on, Joe.
Emily, can you confirm, you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, I appreciate everybody being here this afternoon, Commissioners, Administrators, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Durham with the Montgomery County Engineers' Office, and this is the viewing, or the hearing, I apologize, for the Philadelphia Drive Culvert Rehabilitation Project. This project is located in Harrison Township. It's, the northern limit of the project is located at the intersection of Philadelphia Drive and Marquee Road, and stretches south from that intersection along Philadelphia Drive, roughly about 800 feet. As we are looking at an aerial of the project site, the red line is indicating the location of the culvert, the length of the culvert, and you can tell from the aerial, we are in a residential area. Scope of the project is to rehabilitate roughly about 1,000 feet of a 54-inch diameter culvert. It's made up of concrete pipe as well as metal pipe. The first 250 feet started measured in from the inlet is concrete. We will replace that portion of the pipe in its entirety. And then the remaining 750 feet, which is corrugated metal pipe, we will rehabilitate, repair, in place with a technique that will not cause any surface damage. It's a trenchless technology. We will also be installing manholes roughly about every 300 feet along the length of the culvert. That is for construction purposes, as well as future maintenance access. And then we will improve some safety grading along the side of Philadelphia Drive within the project. Going through some conditions of the existing pipe, the history is unknown. On the structure, it's been added on to over the decades. For instance, in this particular photo, this is the transition from the concrete pipe into the metal pipe. And deeper into the condition, within the concrete section, there's actually a water main. main that's physically cut through the existing structure. And then in addition, there are joints, as you can see in the photo of the right, where they've opened up, the joints have opened up, and now there's material from outside the pipe leaking into the pipe. Going into the corrugated metal pipe, roughly about 800 feet, 750 or 800 feet of it, the condition of that pipe is in a severe state of deterioration. In these photos, what you see is I'm standing inside the pipe, and the photo on the left is my hand reaching through a hole in the bottom of the pipe. And then the photo on the right is my size 13 foot going through a hole in the bottom of the pipe. So it's due to these conditions, this excessive corrosion and deterioration that work is needed on this structure. So the next few photos is taking you up on top of Philadelphia Drive from the inlet and then walking along the east side of Philadelphia in the northward direction toward the intersection of Marquee. So the photo on the left is the inlet. Photo on the right is the southern end, now looking northbound along the east side of Philadelphia Drive. You can just see the residential nature of the frontages. You can see the utilities, again, progressing north along the east side of Philadelphia Drive. And what's nice about the trenchless technology is the utilities, the trees that are up along the road, the front yards, we are able to minimize impacts to those features. And finally, up here in these left, in these last two photos on the surface, we're at the intersection of Marquee Road. The photo on the right is standing on Philadelphia Drive, looking westward across a private property to Marquee Road. So to be able to do this, to get to the inlet, the existing inlet's actually outside the existing highway easements, and we will, when we go to replace the first 250 feet from the inlet, we will capture that within a proposed perpetual storm sewer. And then we will also need some temporarys. So the perpetual storm sewer easement is highlighted in green. Temporary easement is highlighted in blue. The magenta color, that's the existing highway easement. So at the inlet, we'll need to request perpetual and temporary from two property owners. And then coming along the length of the project, right about in the middle of that 1,000 feet, there's a single property owner where we'll need temporaries, perpetual storm easement, again in green, and then temporary easement, again in blue. And then toward the end of the project, at the northern limits at Marquee and Philadelphia, again, there'll be another resident property owner that we will be requesting additional rightaways from. Perpetual storm easement in green, but then also a perpetual highway easement in yellow. I'll get into some details here on these needs in the next few slides. So starting back at the inlet, parcel one is the Blumstock parcel. We will be requesting perpetual storm easement and highway easement. These photos are showing the frontage of the Blumstock parcel. Photo on the left, you can see where the driveway is building on the left, and you have the channel inlet on the right. Photo on the right is just looking from the property at the driveway. Scope of work on their parcel is, one, to remove and replace the inlet of the culvert, the new portion of the culvert itself. And due to the equipment that needs to get in there, we'll be doing some regrading as well as repairing and replacing their driveway apron. And then their immediate adjacent neighbor is the parcel number two, that's the Manor This is the photo showing the resident, the white structure, the asphalt drive, the tree in the immediate front, that tree is directly over the structure, the proposed, and will need to be removed. And then the channels, the inlet channels behind it to the left. So the scope of work is, for the Manor parcel, is very similar to the Blumstock. You're replacing that existing portion of the pipe, regrading, and then due to the equipment and anticipated issues, replacing the driveway apron. And then, again, moving down to 1,000 feet worth of project, but there's specific spots where we need to actually disturb some earth. About in the middle is the Mueller parcel. The green area, green area is that storm sewer easement, and the blue area is the temporary. This is photo looking at the Mueller parcel. Their house is up on a hill. You can see the DPNL pulls along the east side of Philadelphia Drive. Scope of the work is, on the left, you can see where we're going to install, install a new manhole, and that'll slightly go outside the existing highway easement, so that's why we are asking for that perpetual storm sewer easement. And then this is an area where, due to a horizontal curve on Philadelphia Drive, we are going to reconstruct a shoulder, add some safety grading to help provide a better shoulder, so if any errant vehicle leaves the road, it's easier for them to get back on. And then finally, at the northern limit of the project, up at the intersection of Philadelphia and Marquee is the Deeper Nick Parcel. This is the parcel where, in addition to perpetual storm sewer easement, we will be requesting a perpetual highway easement. Here's a photo, standing on Philadelphia Drive, looking westbound across the Deeper Nick Parcel at Marquee Road. The location of the actual storm sewer, the culvert in this particular area, is roughly under the stop sign and three small object markers, which you can see to the left of that stop sign. And the structure is actually on the private property of the Deeper Nick Parcel. So scope of work here is in the green area and in the, which is the perpetual storm sewer easement, as well as the yellow area, the new proposed perpetual highway easement. We will do some reconstruction of the existing culvert to be able to drop a manhole in. Then that will, then with the perpetual highway easement and the storm sewer easement, we will then get it within easements that we have control of and then future ability to maintenance the structure. The reason why we're asking for the highway easement is because a portion of the road itself, physical pavement, as well as the stop sign and those object markers, are actually outside the highway easement at this moment. So we want to capture those back into the highway easement, so we have control of those. So overall project costs, the design was done in-house by engineer staff. Construction is estimated at $935,000. The county has secured a grant from the Highway Public Works Commission to cover $600,000 of those construction costs, the remaining portion being funded out of budgeted road A&amp;G funds. Project schedule, we have completed the design, and we are now entering into the rightaway phase of the project, which is scheduled to be wrapped up in December of 2020. We will advertise the project in January of 2021 and hope to have a contract executed with the contractor in February 21. Construction then will begin in March of 2021. We expect this project to take roughly about three to four months, with the road being closed at that time. For the closure, the detour for this project will take motors from Philadelphia Drive up the southern end, along State Route 48, on to Marquee Road, and then back to Philadelphia And with that, if anyone has any questions?
No questions.
Well, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the Philadelphia Drive Culvert Rehabilitation Project in Harrison Township, and recognize it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of and uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Highway Revise Code, and authorize the county engineer to proceed with rightaway negotiations.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Sounds like a great project, Paul.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joe.
You should have control, Emily.
Yep, I do. I'm going to end it now.
Have a great day.
You too.
All right, all that's left, any comments by the county administrator?
Thank you, commissioners. I have two comments. The first is, I'd like, I'd really like to say thank you to our CARES Act team. They have worked a tremendous amount of hours, Marvine and her team, Larry, Chris, and that whole team, on moving this CARES Act piece forward, especially the business. And we, today, we have, as you've approved commissioners, our contract with County Corp. to actually do the disbursements to the business community. And I know, Ward, you spent a lot of time reviewing our contracts on this, so I just want to say thank you. It's a lot of work, but we're now at the point to where we've identified a certain number of businesses that are ready to go out, and we'll be moving to the disbursement side in our, in our relationship with County Corp. I'd also like to say congratulations. Montgomery County was once again named 25 recipients as part of an annual Healthiest Employer Award by the Dayton Business Journal. And so we're one of 25. This is, we've had multiple years of this award.
Five.
Five, okay. I'd like to thank Joyce and her team. I think she has done an excellent job, and her team in wellness. And I'd also like to thank you, county commissioners, for your leadership, especially in allowing us to continue with our incentives for health and also our HSAs. And I think that is a big incentive for people to, to try to be as healthy as they can. So thank you, thank our team, and thank you, county commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. Judy, would you want to weigh in?
I couldn't hear that. Were you asking me?
Do you want to weigh in? It's your turn if you would like to make any comments. Don't have to.
You guys go ahead, and I'll, I'll do the last bit, okay?
Okay.
I want to remind people about something. So you go ahead.
Okay. All right, Debbie?
All right. Well, first of all, I would like to say happy birthday to Carolyn. Yesterday was her birthday.
Yes.
Happy birthday, Carolyn.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I want to take a moment and try to do this without crying. We lost on Sunday a dear friend, an amazing public servant, Judge John Pickrell. And Judy and John had been together for 16 years. And I know, Judy, that this is so difficult, and I just wanted to say, on behalf of all of us here, we're here for you and we love you, and we're just going to miss John so much.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, this has been very difficult for me, because he was just a good, decent, you know, kind, sweet person. And I know it's my loss, but as well as his family, and, you know, we're all in this together, and so many friends have reached out. You know, he really made such a, you know, difference in our community with the mental health court, and, well, he's just a fine, fine, fine person. And I know we're all going to miss him. So thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you saying that.
Then I want to talk a little bit about COVID. You know, we know, the governor's pointed it out, COVID-19 is on the rise here in our county. And both in positive tests, and some people say, well, it's because you're testing more. Well, it's more than that. It's because also we know that it's on the rise because there's more hospitalizations. We're not at a critical point yet, but let's keep that, let's keep it that way. And so I, I mean, we have to remember the rules that we were following early on when we were doing so well. I know things are open back up, but we can, we can do things and be safe. We have to, we have to socially distance. I know this is tough for people, but we have to wear masks. I mean, study after study after study shows that wearing a mask really stops this. And so we've got to, we've got to make sure that our, our family, I'm not going to forget commissioners over there washing their hands. Yeah, washing their hands. Yeah, so, yeah, mask important, but so, let's not forget to wash our hands. And I think now we can see stations everywhere with hand sanitizer. So we can do this, we've got to do better, though. You know, and, and I know it's so hard for people not to want to get together, but that's where a lot of the spread is now they're showing that it's people having parties and getting together. And the other thing that's happening now that didn't happen in the first few months, it's they're seeing young people now. I wouldn't want to say young, under 40. And, you know, they're not immune to it, clearly. Will they get as sick? Probably not, but everybody just has to be diligent and, because if we're not, we're going to, we're going to end up like a couple of these other states that are having to shut down again. And we certainly don't want that. So I'm encouraging everybody, keep doing what we are doing and wear a mask. If you can't, if you can't socially distance, especially, wear a mask. But if you're outside exercising, you don't necessarily have to have a mask, or if you're outside in a park or doing anything, you don't, but let's just, let's just do better.
Totally agree, totally agree. And it's just one of those situations where, you know, you've heard, I'm like a broken record. I have deep, deep respect for this virus. I know that the best scientists and doctors don't know everything about it. They're learning as we go. And I know you shared with us that it's even, there's some signs that some strains may have mutated and become even more infectious. So none of us, you know, all we can do is really control how we behave. We don't have total control of others, and that's true in a lot of things in life. But especially with this virus, I just beg everyone, for the sake of yourself, your family, your friends, your colleagues, your neighbors, and everyone, let's, we're all in the same boat. Let's just tough it out. We've been through so much together. I know we can come through this, and it will only make us appreciate that much more when they finally get some therapies for this and they get vaccines and that we can return to life, and let's just, you know, make the best of this. And quite honestly, there've been good things come out of this as well. And I, I think it, if nothing else, an appreciation of the things we take for granted, like the ability to hug a person, and how much it means to every human being to have that social contact. So let us do our job and let us learn from this. Now, I do want to transfer a little bit to a different point, that we are quite excited that two of our team on the county were recognized as one of the Top 40 Under 40. So Rachel Ward, who serves as our manager of community programming for human services planning and development, was one of the recipients. And at the state level, Rachel serves as the regional coordinator for the Western Ohio Regional Prevention Council for Ohio's Children Trust Fund. The mission of Ohio Children's Trust Fund is to prevent child abuse and neglect through investing in strong communities, healthy families, and safe children. Rachel serves on several notable boards, the Montgomery County Food Equity Coalition, backbone support team, and that's right up Judy's alley of one of her core, core focuses. Rachel also serves on Learn to Earn Dayton's Early Learning Advisory Board and the Birth to Three Stakeholder Group. So we're excited for Rachel's achievement, and we're grateful for her expertise and leadership, and we want to thank her for everything she does for our community. And it's so exciting to have, these are our future leaders. They're coming up behind us and getting great experience and making a difference every day, so that's exciting. Now, our second one, it was Samantha Elder, who was also named as a recipient for the 40 Under 40. And Sam was actually one of our previous public information officers. But now, you know, we had to give her up a little bit, but to a fellow agency, the Montgomery County ADAMAS, the Alcohol, Drug, Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board. So she's doing a terrific job there as the Director of Strategic Initiatives and Communication. So we, all of us in this room, I think, are just very excited to have these two amazing young women who've already accomplished so much at this point in their career. I can only imagine what they will be able to do in the years ahead. So we are thrilled beyond measure that they're on our team, making a difference in our community for the things we've set for our strategic vision.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, it's team members like this that will help us not only hopefully achieve those goals, but exceed them. So congratulations to Rachel and to Sam.
Yeah, I just want to add that- Yeah, I just want to add that they're both really amazing. I mean, the things that you read off are just some of the things that Rachel does. I mean, in the community, she just seems like she's everywhere. And Sam's the same way. I mean, Samantha volunteers and, you know, does it all with a young daughter. And she just, they're both amazing, so congratulations to them. And then Judy, wrap it up. So we know that people's unemployment is probably getting ready to run out, a lot of people, especially that $600 a week at the end of July. Probably used up your stimulus check by now. And people are really, I'm hearing from people all the time myself, that people are worried about their mortgage. How are they going to pay it? They're worried about their rent. And we, we've talked about this once before, but we, Montgomery County, our Office of Cares Act is launching a $10 million housing assistance program. Probably two weeks, right? Once we get it all said and done, so.
Two weeks from today.
Yep, two weeks from today. And $5 million will be dedicated to rental assistance, and $5 million will be dedicated to mortgage assistance. And there will also be funding to help with utility bills. So we want to make sure the citizens know about this program, remind citizens about the small business grants, up to $10,000, that are available through the county, the Office of Cares. And so you can visit our website, which is www.mcohiohcares.org, and you can sign up to get email notifications about next steps and about the rental and the mortgage. You know, I just want to say that we've been very transparent about what we're doing from the beginning. You know, immediately, we found out from Department of Treasury, we were going to get quite a bit of money. But it all has to be COVID-related. So that's why we created the Small Business Grant, and that's why we're doing this. We've been very open about what we're doing, what we've already done for homelessness, the food bank, others. We've been supplying PPEs. And so I was very concerned when I heard last week that at the city commission meeting, the mayor of Dayton criticized us and said that we weren't sharing our plan. Well, I'm not sure what more we can do to share our plan, Michael, but maybe we could take out a full-page ad? I don't know. But thank you. And thank our Office of Cares Act, because we are very transparent about what we're doing. We have to be. You know, the Treasury is going to be so strict about these dollars. So we can't just, you know, randomly throw them towards a cause. So thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. We are leading the state right now by creating our CARES Act's office. Other counties are following your leadership. We do a resolution every single time we create a new program. And to your point, Commissioner, the programs are created within the guidelines that come out from Treasury. So they basically dictate, you can do it in business, you can do rental assistance. They dictate to us what we can do with these dollars. So thank you for your leadership on this. This has been incredibly tough. Marveen and her team have had to read regulations, and they're working with other counties, other peer counties, especially Hamilton County, who's been a great partner with us. So our ability to get these dollars out as soon as possible has been a lot of work. So thank you for leading the state. Additionally, the three of you advocated for the $13 million that we received for other jurisdictions. I know all three of you spent a lot of time in Columbus, talking with the Dewine administration, working with members of the House and the Senate so that our jurisdictions can get additional dollars. And so I thank you again. In the case of the city of Dayton, they'll get $8.2 million. And so that took a lot of work. So, you know, it's been a lot of hard work, but I think it's been a team effort, so thank you.
Well, and I would only add that when we make our announcement in two weeks, that we're not done.
Right.
There's programs for agriculture and education. You know, it takes some time to develop, you know, the structure around each of those programs. So be on the lookout for that. But I would suggest, like you already said, whatever your interest is, get on the mcohiohcares.com or org?
Org.
Org, okay. Mcohiohcares.org, and get onto the email list. And if you know someone in agriculture, you know something in education, make sure you're in the know as soon as those get announced as well. So we are not done by far. And the real challenge, and I know we've said this from the first day, is once we get these programs up and running under the structure, then it all has to be spent on the allowed uses by December 30th. So that may sound a long way, that is six months from today. And that will fly by fast. So get on the email, get enrolled or apply as soon as possible. And we want to use every penny that has been sent our way for the good uses that it's allowed to be used on because this is really a booster shot to our economy to recover from COVID and address it. And I know Judy still wants to say something.
I just want to add one more thing. I think it goes, we should repeat, that we, Montgomery County, got direct money from the federal government. We are not getting any additional money from the state. And so that money that we got from Treasury is because they did that for counties and cities across the United States that had 500,000 or more people. So in Ohio, five counties received it, and the city of Columbus, because we're over 500,000. You know, the other thing to remember about it is, everything has to be COVID-related. So we, and other counties in Ohio especially, we bear the burden. We're bearing the burden of this. And so I just, again, commend you and our CARES team, Michael. They're doing a great job. Thank you.
So Judy, do you have any final comments?
Well, there's nothing left. You said it all.
No, we didn't.
I was going to say, most of the stuff you said, and I agree. You know, any citizen out there that qualifies for the things we just talked about, please, don't think you can wait three or four months. You've got to get going on this. So we've got to get this money spent. We don't want to turn any, we don't want to turn a dime back to the federal and state government. We want to get this into the hands of our citizens here that really need it. So I just want to push everybody to pay attention and to don't dilly-dally on that. And then the other thing I wanted to say was that, starting July 1st, I can't believe I'm saying July 1st, Census Bureau is going to be reaching out to large group homes, senior centers, and colleges to make sure their residents are counted. So please, I'm going to give you a phone number and a website to please contact the Census Bureau if you have not been contacted or filled out the Census Bureau information. It is critical, critical, to do this. You can call 1-844-330-2020. That's 1-844-330-2020. Or my2020census.gov, my2020census.gov. So please do that. And for heaven's sakes, wear a dag on mask. It's not that hard to do. I go to the grocery store, I can't tell you how many people are not wearing masks, except for staff, and a few, myself, and a few other people. So please, when you're out and about, please wear a mask. Stay socially six feet apart from people and wash your hands frequently. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
You, Commissioner.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I will move for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.